He addressed the Canadian House of Commons on Monday about last week's attacks on the United States. Opposition party leaders, including Canadian Alliance leader Stockwell Day, also made statements. It's followed by the Parliament's Question Time. This is about 2 hours and 15 minutes.
On debate, the right Honorable Prime Minister.
Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the leaders of all the parties in the House of Commons, indeed all members, for their cooperation in organizing this historic debate. In the sad and trying days since the awful news came from New York and Washington, it has been clear that the civilized nations of the world have a solemn duty to speak as one against the scourge of terrorism. Under these urgent circumstances, Canadians will be pleased to see that their elected representatives have come together in a spirit of unity and resolve to make this debate our first order of business. I look forward to hearing the views of members on the role that Canada should play in shaping a firm and just global response to an unprecedented global threat. Mr. Speaker, there are those rare occasions when time seems to stand still, when a singular event trend fixes the world. There are also those terrible occasions when the dark side of human nature escapes civilized restraint and shows its ugly face to a stunned world. Tuesday, September 11th, 2001, will forever be etched in memory as the day when time stood still. Mr. Speaker, when I saw the scenes of devastation, my first thoughts and words were for all the victims and the American people. But there are no words in any language whose force or eloquence could equal the quiet testimony last Friday of 100,000 Canadians gathered just a few yards from here for our National Day of Mourning. I was proud to be one of them, and I was equally proud of the Canadians who gathered in ceremonies right across the country. It was a sea of sorrow and sympathy for those who have lost friends and loved ones—Americans, Canadians, citizens of many countries. Above all, it was a sea of solidarity with our closest friend and partner in the world, the United States of America. Mr. Speaker, as always, this time of crisis brought out the very best in our people—from prayer meetings and vigils through the countless numbers who line up to give blood, from a flood of donations by individuals and businesses to patients in face of delays and inconvenience. And we were all moved by the sight of Canadians opening up their hearts and their homes to thousands of confused and anxious air travelers who had no place to go. When I spoke to President Bush last week, he asked me to thank the Canadian people, and I will ask all members to carry his message back to their constituencies. Mr. Speaker, the President also told me that he had been told many times by his own officials about the tremendous cooperation and assistance that they were receiving from the agencies and departments of the government of Canada in responding to the immediate emergency of the attack and in the investigation that will bring to justice those who committed this crime against humanity.
Mr. Speaker, indeed, I am proud of the speed and coordination that has characterized our response, assessing and prepositioning disaster assistance supplies so that we could respond in a timely and effective manner when called upon. We saw to the safety of stranded air travelers, we worked to protect the safety of Canadians, we shared information with investigators, and we responded to calls for information about loved ones. The relevant ministers will inform the House in detail on what their departments have done and are doing on behalf of Canadians, but I want to express my appreciation to our public servants for their round-the-clock effort. Mr. Speaker, the House must also address the threat that terrorism poses to all civilized peoples and the role that Canada must play in defeating it. To understand what is at stake—and the stakes are high—we need only reflect on the symbolic meaning of World Trade Center Towers. In the words of their architect, the towers were "a representation of our belief in humanity, our need for individual dignity, our belief in cooperation, and through cooperation, our ability to find greatness." So let us be clear: This was not just an attack on the United States. These cold-blooded killers struck a blow at the values and beliefs of free and civilized people everywhere. The world has been attacked. The world must respond. And Canada, a nation founded on a belief of freedom, justice, and tolerance, will be part of that response because we are at war against terrorism. Mr. Speaker, terrorists are not attached to any one country. Terrorism is a global threat. The perpetrators have demonstrated their ability to move with ease from country to country, from place to place, to make use of the freedom and openness of the victims on whom they pray—the very freedom and openness that we all cherish and protect and will protect. They are willing and indeed anxious to die in the commission of their crimes and to use innocent civilians as shields and as tools. We must prepare ourselves and Canadians for the fact that this will be a long struggle with no easy solutions—a struggle in which patience and wisdom are essential.
Mr. Speaker, let us not deceive ourselves as to the nature of the threat that faces us. This can be defeated easily or simply with one swift strike. We must be guided by a commandment to do what works in the long run, not but what makes us feel better in the short run. Mr. Speaker, our actions will be ruled by resolve, but not by fear. If laws need to be changed, they will be. If security has to be increased to protect Canadians, it will be. We will remain vigilant, but will not give in into the temptation in a rush to increase security to undermine the values that we cherish. And which have made Canada a beacon of hope, freedom, and tolerance in the world. We will not be stampede in the hope vain and ultimately self-defeating that we can make Canada a fortress against the world. Finally, Mr. Speaker, I want to make another very, very important point. Canada is a nation of immigrants from all corners of the globe, people of all nationalities, colors, and religions. This is who we are, and let there be no doubt, we will allow no one to force us to sacrifice our values, our traditions, under the pressure of urgent circumstances. We will continue to welcome people from the whole world. We will continue to offer refuge to the persecuted. I say again, no one will stop this. I have been saddened by the fact that the terror of last Tuesday has provoked demonstrations against Muslim Canadians or other minority groups in Canada. This is completely unacceptable. The evil perpetrators of this horror represent no community or religion. They stand for evil, nothing else. As I have said, this is a struggle against terrorism, not against any one community or faith. Today, more than ever, we must reaffirm the fundamental values of our Charter of Rights and Freedoms—the equality of every race, every color, every religion, and every ethnic origin. Mr. Speaker, we are all Canadians. We are a compassionate and righteous people. When we see the searing images of mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, many of them Canadian, wandering the streets of New York looking for their missing loved ones, we know where our duty lies. We have never been a bystander in the struggle for justice in the world. We will stand with Americans as neighbors, as friends, as family. We will stand with our allies. We will do what we must to defeat terrorism, but let our actions be guided by a spirit of wisdom and perseverance, by our values and our way of life. And as we press the struggle, let us never, ever forget who we are and what we stand for.
Resuming debate, the Honorable Leader of the Opposition.
Mr. Speaker, we are only six days from the morning of September 11th, 2001, a new date which we all know will live on in infamy. On that day and a few harrowing hours, the world was changed forever. None of us will ever forget where we were, the moments we first heard that planes had struck the World Trade Center and the Pentagon. But for many, many people, including hundreds of Canadians, that awful moment will never end. There will always be a missing daughter or son, a husband or wife, a mother or father who will never return. It is to these victims of these barbaric acts and to their families and to their loved ones that our hearts and minds and our prayers must go first. We must let these know, these families, these who have suffered loss, that we are with them, that this Parliament is with them, and that Canada is with them. Mr. Speaker, last week's horrific attacks in New York, Washington, and Pennsylvania have shocked everyone in the civilized world. These mass hijackings and suicide attacks were more than a crime, they were barbaric acts of war. They were aimed straight at the heart of our society. I say "society," Mr. Speaker, because these attacks were not just aimed at New York or even just at the United States. They were aimed at everyone in the world who believes in democracy and freedom. They were aimed at everything we hold dear here in Canada also. Our first thoughts must turn to those who were lost in this horrific attack and to their grieving families—the passengers and crew of those airplanes, the men and women working in the office towers, pedestrians below those towers, brave firefighters and police who rushed in only to be killed themselves. Our thoughts, Mr. Speaker, are with these brave souls. They died because they lived in freedom, and freedom was targeted for attack. Mr. Speaker, the very next day following the awful attacks in New York, the people of New York, hurting and feeling great pain, returned to their jobs. Many opened their shops, some covered in ashes, and with their hearts aching, but their heads held high, they said to a watching world, "We are bruised, but we will not be broken." Let us join them in that spirit to do what must be done to stop the forces of terror and tyranny and keep wide the doors of freedom and peace. Mr. Speaker, our hearts go out to all our brave neighbors in the United States—that great beacon of hope and freedom to the world, our greatest ally and our closest friend. When Canada has needed them in the past, the United States has been there for us. When the world has needed them, the United States has been there. Along with Canadians, the brave men and women of the United States crossed the Atlantic and Pacific in the Second World War to stop tyranny, and their determined value was only exceeded by their friendship and the peace that followed. Mr. Speaker, now is the time for Canada and Canadians to stand by our great friends and great allies as never before. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the Prime Minister and the Foreign Affairs Minister for their words of solidarity towards the United States. And during this crisis, it is important that MPs from all parties put forward a united front. I will do that, others will do that. Today I know that every member of Parliament from every party would call himself or herself a Canadian, an ally, a friend—not just a member of a particular party. The Prime Minister has my full support as we stand shoulder to shoulder with the United Mr. Speaker, I would also like to pay tribute to the thousands of Canadians—from RCMP officers and Customs Agents to airport personnel to firefighters, doctors and nurses, and citizens who've donated blood for responding with such compassion and concern to this crisis—they have shown that Canadians will stand with the United States, our greatest friend and ally, in its hour of need. The Prime Minister called on behalf of Canadians for a National Day of Mourning last Friday, and we deeply appreciated that opportunity to express our sorrow and show our unshakable support for our American neighbors and for Canadians who suffered loss. Mr. Speaker, in a great show of Canadian solidarity and support on Parliament Hill last Friday and in similar ceremonies across the country, Canadians sent that message. The only missing element from that ceremony was the acknowledgement in a time of sorrow and heartbreak of our Creator. Because, Mr. Speaker, in the days ahead, it is only with divine wisdom, grace, and understanding that we shall overcome. Mr. Speaker, as we join with the people of the United States and especially with the families of the victims to remember the dead, let us now dedicate ourselves to protect the living. The events of September 11th were not merely tragic like a train wreck or an earthquake, but they were evil, as the Prime Minister has said. We must make sure that this kind of evil shall not prevail. President Bush has rightly called this struggle "the first war of the 21st century." Make no mistake, the war on terrorism is not merely the moral equivalent of war like a war on drugs or a war on poverty. This is a genuine war, which can only be won, as Sir Winston Churchill said of another long struggle, "with blood, toil, tears, and sweat." Canada, in evoking Article 5 of the NATO Charter, has joined with our allies in declaring that this attack on the United States is an attack on ourselves—the first such declaration in the 50-year history of NATO. This is not just an American struggle, for the terrorist war is not only aimed at America, nor is it being fought only in America, but throughout the world, including here in Canada. The suicide bombing of the World Trade Center was an attack on Canada as well. Terrorists have declared war on the entire free world, and the entire free world must declare war on terrorism. Mr. Speaker, this is not a war with ghosts but with real people. Osama bin Laden has been publicly identified as the prime suspect behind these murderous acts, and bin Laden has been sheltered—if not aided and abetted—time will tell on that question by the Taliban regime of Afghanistan. The free world must tell all states that no matter what their ideology, supporting or condoning terror against civilians, will never, ever be tolerated. But while bin Laden's Al Qaeda movement or other radical groups from the Middle East may be guilty of these infamous acts, we know that the overwhelming majority of Arabs and Muslims here in Canada and around the world deplore and abhor these attacks as strongly as we do. I have discussed this matter with my colleague, the Member of Parliament from Edmonton Strathcona. I believe possibly the only Muslim member of this House who has told me of the sensitivity of this issue in Canada's Muslim community at this difficult time. The true meaning of Islam, surrender to God, the religion of Salam—or peace—is diametrically opposed to these kinds of evil acts. The Islamic beliefs in peace and brotherhood are among the elements which make our Canadian community strong and caring places in which to live. At this hour of darkness, let us reach out in a special way to our peaceful Arab and Muslim friends and neighbors here in Canada and reject any backlash against the innocent even as we strive to bring the guilty to justice.
The two teachings of Islam are diametrically opposed to the interpretations made by the terrorists. I would invite the people to extend a hand to our Arab and Muslim friends and avoid all forms of discrimination against innocent individuals. We don't want this extremist act to attack an entire community or population because we must find those who are guilty.
We're thankful for having enjoyed a long season of peace, and when we consider our role in the world, we are more likely to think of Canadians keeping peace than waging war. Some in this country have already begun to say the talk of war is overblown and irresponsible, and that we must instead address the root causes of terrorism. This is true, root causes must be addressed. But it is sheer folly—and let there be no mistake—when we say that the root cause of terrorism is the terrorists themselves and the hatred that moves them to massacre the innocent can never be negotiated with or reasoned with. This is not a matter of shades and gray, when it comes to these barbarous acts of evil. It is set in black and white. This is not a time for moral ambiguity, it is a moment of moral clarity. As Canadians, as subjects of this peaceable land, we did not seek this conflict. But however much we might tell ourselves that we are not targets, that we really are not involved, that this is not our war, the reality is that we cannot avoid it. As I said last week, there are no rear-guard positions in the struggle against terrorism, only front lines. And Canada is on the front line whether we want to be there or not. In the words of Prime Minister Blair, "People of all faiths and all democratic political persuasions have a common cause—to identify this machine of terror and to dismantle it as swiftly as possible." In the past, when summoned to action in World War I, when we were a nation of only some 8 million people, 625,000 soldiers went into action from Canada. In World War II, again a huge effort, especially in relation to the size of our population, and in Korea and in the Gulf, Canada proves itself ready. We joined with our allies and did our share, sometimes at great cost. Now is no different. The war on terrorism will require real sacrifices and new priorities. Now we must face the difficult question of whether Canada is ready to face this new struggle. Canada is a free and democratic society. It is precisely because we are a free and democratic society which values and desires to protect our way of life that we cannot avoid the awful responsibility of joining in the war on terrorism. Mr. Speaker, the form of democracy we are privileged to enjoy is the Westminster Parliamentary System, and in our historic form of democratic government, it falls to it falls to the leader of Her Majesty's loyal opposition to ask difficult questions, painful at times, and to pose alternatives as to what the government should do. In my address today and in the speeches from alliance and other opposition members of Parliament, we will pose important questions as to whether Canada is sufficiently prepared to face this challenge which has been thrust upon us. For several years, the official opposition has consistently raised issues of border security, the integrity of our refugee identification system, and the need for more resources for military, security, and intelligence purposes. We've drawn attention to terrorist activity within Canada. In our view, the government unfortunately has not always responded as fully as it should have to these concerns. But the world has changed since September 11th, 2001. And what was an important, if sometimes overlooked, concern before September 11th has now become an absolute moral imperative since September the 11th. Addressing these issues of national security must now become the single highest priority of the Parliament and the government of Canada.
Today, the official opposition is not just looking towards the past, but rather, we are here to propose concrete and constructive solutions for the future.
Fix blame, we want to fix the problem.
I would like to move three important changes today to better help the Canadian government to undertake its war against terrorism. I propose that we should have anti-terrorist legislation. Secondly, we should secure, ensure the frontiers and airports and protect them against terrorist attempts. And, thirdly, we should give our army, our police, and our security information services those resources that they need to be involved in this fight and give them a clear mandate to act.
...in some of these areas before September 11th. The question before us now is how to respond adequately now that we know we cannot avoid this fight. In 1996, in the wake of the Oklahoma City bombing, the United States brought in comprehensive anti-terrorism legislation in the form of the Anti-Terrorism and Effective Death Penalty Act, signed by President Clinton. In Canada, the Interdepartmental Intelligence Policy Group reviewed the US legislation but concluded, and I quote, "that the need for such a scheme or its potential effectiveness could not be established." In 2000, the United Kingdom, which already had strong anti-terrorism legislation on its books to deal with the threat of the IRA, brought in new sweeping anti-terrorism legislation to deal with international terrorism operating within the UK. The official opposition has pointed to the British Terrorism Act 2000 as an example of the kind of effective legislation that we feel Canada needs to deal with the threat of terrorist groups operating within our borders. Both the US Anti-Terrorism Act of 1996 and the British Terrorism Act 2000 took concrete steps to name and outlaw specific terrorist organizations operating within those countries and to ban any fundraising or other support activities on their behalf. Yet in Canada, the government has avoided the approach of naming and banning specific terrorist organizations and their front groups. This is a step, Mr. Speaker, that no longer can be put off. Canada is a signatory to, indeed helped to draft the United Nations International Convention for the Suppression of the Financing of Terrorism of 1999, which calls for a complete ban on all forms of fundraising for terrorist organizations. Unfortunately, Canada has not yet ratified this convention and has not yet tabled this legislation to give it force and effect. Bill C-16, which allows the government to strip charitable status from groups raising funds for terrorism, is a first tentative step, but it falls short of an outright ban on terrorist fundraising.
Bill C-16, before Parliament, would allow for deploying statutes for nonprofit organizations that finance terrorism to be dealt with. It would be a good step, it is a good step. But there is much that remains to be done before we achieve true anti-terrorism legislation which would prevent terrorism in Canada and would eliminate the presence of these groups on our territory.
We know that terrorist groups such as Babar Khalsa, the Liberation Tigers of Tamil Elan, the Kurdistan Workers' Party, and the Irish Republican Army have all raised large amounts of money in Canada and continue to do so. Indeed, CSIS reported in 1998 that there are some 50 terrorist groups operating in Canada. In testimony that year before a Senate committee, CSIS Director Ward Elcock said, and I quote, "As only a partial list, individuals and groups here have had direct or indirect associations with the 1993 World Trade Center bombing, suicide bombings in Israel, assassinations in India, the murder of terrorists in Egypt, the Al Qadar Towers attack in Saudi Arabia, and the bombing campaign of the provisional IRA." He went on to say that we cannot become, through inaction or otherwise, what might be called "an unofficial state sponsor of terrorism." We cannot allow that to happen, Mr. Speaker. Merely giving the Solicitor General and the CCRA the power to strip charitable status from these organizations and their front groups is not good enough. Governments must name these groups, define them, publicly outlaw them, and ban all fundraising on their behalf. Governments should have the power to freeze and seize the Canadian assets of terrorist organizations and their front groups. Mr. Speaker, we will look forward to more input on this particular area legislation, and we will look forward to the government response in this particular area. We must deal with this. The second broad area I want to address is the security of our borders and airports, and how we can better screen people arriving in Canada to prevent possible terrorists from reaching Canada in the first place. The security of Canada's borders and airports is, of course, a vital national and international security issue, but it is also a vital economic issue. Canada relies on the billion-dollar-a-day flow of trade to and from the United States as a linchpin of our economy. Last week's airport and border shutdowns and delays will likely cost our economy tens of millions of dollars. The fact that our two countries share the world's largest undefended border is not a right, but a privilege. If we expect to maintain the kind of access the United States and they to us that we have enjoyed in the past, we must now take steps to show our American neighbors that we are every bit as concerned about maintaining security and preventing terrorism and organized crime as they are. Mr. Speaker, we remember the threat posed to the Canadian economy by the Illegal Immigration Reform and Immigrant Responsibility Act passed by the US Congress in 1997. It was only significant and hard lobbying by the Canadian Embassy and others that one changes to the legislation to exempt the Canadian-US border. But will that be the case after September 11th, 2001? We must work in this regard with all diligence, Mr. Speaker. What kind of measures may be necessary to ensure security at our points of entry? Our critics in that area have been working diligently with security forces and others to help identify the things that must be done. We will consider the various ideas being brought forward and suggested, whether it is increased implementation of electronic passport screening, the idea of air marshals, and other steps that must be taken to secure and grant security on our airlines. At our land borders, Canada Customs Officers should be issued the right training and equipment to deal with the increased security that will be required there. And our critics in that area will bring forward specific items related to those areas. Mr. Speaker, there is no question these steps and others will cost more money. The United States Congress has already authorized $40 billion in spending as simply a first installment on cleanup measures and anti-terrorist activities. And the official opposition will support new spending in these areas, even if it means going beyond certain current spending plans, as long as we are assured that other spending in low and falling priority areas is carefully pruned. Most of these changes can be done through a reallocation of resources and an attack on wasteful spending. This type of scrutiny is difficult with a government which has refused to table a full budget, but that will be the subject of another day. Mr. Speaker, we are focused on these issues, we are focused on solutions. We also must look at tougher screening systems being put in place to keep people who post security risks to Canadians and others from entering the country in the first place. And for those currently in the refugee identification system who have not yet received landed status or citizenship, we need better tracking to make sure that we are able to locate possible security risks. And to do that rapidly, this should be an immediate priority. We need the resources to do that also, and we need the will. Mr. Speaker, we are known as a country which welcomes with open arms refugees who are seeking freedom and democracy. Unfortunately, we are known so much to be soft also in not identifying, and after identifying, dealing rapidly with those who are a risk. Refugee claimants who break our laws or people who have entered this country illegally, especially where there are concerns about security risks, should immediately be detained or deported, not simply asked to check in at an Immigration Canada office once or twice a month. We must take the proper steps in this regard, Mr. Speaker. We need to do this, and we need to do it with all diligence. Bill C-11, which is currently before the House, does not address many of these concerns. It does represent, in some ways, a step backwards from previous Bill C-31 which died on the order paper before the last election. C-11 should be amended to include broader measures to ensure the security and integrity of our refugee system and should be returned to this House. Mr. Speaker, as US Secretary of State Colin Powell has pointed out, the war against terrorism in which we are now engaged will be unlike other wars. The enemy is both at home and abroad. They do not take openly to the battlefield, but they hide in shadows. While it may involve conventional warfare against states who harbor or sponsor terrorist groups, terrorist cells, we must recognize, as has been identified, are also present inside Canada and the United States. Fighting this multi-headed monster of terrorism means attacking all of its operations and doing that simultaneously. Mr. Speaker, we will address in detail the area and concerns of the Canadian Security and Intelligence Service, which has lost 28% of its personnel in the last decade. We will address the areas of the RCMP and their situations related to lost resources. And of course, the largest infusion of resources will have to go to the beleaguered Canadian Armed Forces. Mr. Speaker, over the last year, the Canadian Forces has declined from 90,000 personnel to 55,000 and is on track for further declines. This is a dereliction of our duty. We must support our armed forces and send that message to our NATO members and partners and send that message around the world. Last week, NATO invoked Article 5 for the first time in its history. President Bush made it clear that he is building an international coalition to combat not only terrorist cells, but their state sponsors. We must work and be part of that coalition. Unfortunately, the Taliban regime in Afghanistan has resorted to belligerent rhetoric about its support for Osama bin Laden rather than cooperating with the United States. So the prospect of a conventional military campaign is not remote. Mr. Speaker, if and when the need arises for military action, the United States and NATO will expect Canada to provide a commitment. And we must be willing, and we must be prepared to provide it. And it's for this reason I am asking the Prime Minister to be crystal clear regarding our commitment to the United States and to NATO, up to and including, if necessary, military involvement within our capacity to do so. NATO is perhaps the most successful military and political alliance in history. Its decisions on military action are made with both care and deliberation. We are obliged to be part of that. Now more than ever, Canada's voice and the vote of commitment needs to be heard in the clearest of terms, both in the camps of our friends and in the hidden dens of our enemies. Mr. Speaker, this weekend we have heard the menacing threats. We have heard warnings against freedom-loving nations not to assist the United States in any military action. Our government must be clear. It is not the time to give any signal to the barbaric enemies of freedom and democracy that we will do anything less than stand shoulder to shoulder with our friends, the Americans, and our NATO partners in the face of this insidious threat. Mr. Speaker, this is not a time for half-measures. This is not a time to bring forward previously announced initiatives and relabel them as anti-terrorist measures. There are some positive elements in current proposals like Bill 16 and C-11, but they do not go far enough. Mr. Speaker, we must carry them forward. We must do everything within our power and our will to do. We will continue to bring forward constructive criticisms and suggestions. They are put forward in a spirit of unity and solidarity with the Prime Minister and his cabinet as we enter this first war of the new century. I hope the Prime Minister will accept these constructive criticisms and suggestions in the spirit in which they are given, in the furtherance of our common goal to defeat terrorism at home and abroad. Over the next few weeks, there will be times to discuss and debate whether we are moving fast enough or far enough in certain areas. There will be times to debate whether Canada could have or should have been more prepared. But today is a day to show unity and resolve. We show unity in standing with our American neighbors and especially with the families of the victims of these horrible attacks. We show unity in mourning our own Canadian dead. And we show resolve in facing this enemy of international terrorism and announcing that terror, in all its forms, will not be allowed to stand. Last week, the world saw the face of evil. But good may yet be able to arise out of this evil if the citizens of the free countries of the world rise as one and say that this evil shall not stand and that we will work together to eliminate it from the earth.
In conclusion, Mr. Speaker, I am proud today to join the government in supporting this resolution. I hope that it is the first of many actions that we will take together as parliamentarians and Canadians as we stand united in this war against terrorism.
In these next days and weeks, may God grant wisdom to our Prime Minister and to this Parliament. God save our Queen, God keep our land glorious and free.
Resuming debate. The Honorable Member for Laurier St. Mary. Mr. Speaker, we've just lived through, and indeed we are living through, terrible times. September the 11th, the International Day of Peace. What an absurd coincidence, Mr. Speaker. September the 11th, there was a deadly terrorist attack against New York and Washington. Our first thought goes to the men and women who were victims of this terrible attack, to their families, to their husbands, wives, fathers, mothers, children, and also to those who sought to save them but who perished. We think of Canadians and Quebecers who perished. On behalf of the Blois Québécois and the people it represents, I offer all our condolences to the families and to the American people. During the course of last week and today, we have seen the best and the worst of the human condition. On the one hand, the worst, with the fanaticism of those terrorists who are blinded by hate. But the best, those who stand together to rescue people, the American people, the Canadian people, the Quebec people, people throughout the world who stand together. On Friday last, the National Day of Mourning, we were all New Yorkers, Mr. Speaker. We support this motion. We want it to be carried out in a serene debate. We must ensure the leadership, insofar as possible, that will be there in serenity. This is legitimate anger that we express. This is legitimate anger that we express. It is certainly legitimate anger, but anger is not always the best choice.
We have to analyze the situation calmly, realistically, lucidly, and with great determination. We must remember at all times that we are the defenders of freedom and democracy. That must be central to all our concerns, Mr. Speaker. We must make courageous decisions, weighing carefully the consequences of our decisions on the future of our society, the future of democracy, the future of the world, Mr. Speaker. This attack on September 11th last, let us recall, is an attack not only against the United States, but an attack against democratic values, an attack against freedom, an attack against every country that defends its values, an attack against all the populations of the world, all the peoples who aspire to freedom, justice, democracy, especially populations who are under tyranny. And the Afghan population that is subject to the totalitarianism of the Taliban, Mr. Speaker. Let us remember that the attack of September 11th is not the work of Muslims or Arabs, but of terrorists, Mr. Speaker. Terrorists have no nationality, and democracy should not have a nationality either, Mr. Speaker. Terrorists attacked our democratic values. They radically changed our way of life, but if we give in to that, we'd be playing right into their hands. We have to strike the just balance between security measures to protect our society, of course, and the central place that must be occupied by freedom in our societies. The choices we must make are certainly choices for security, but above all, they are choices of society. A response is necessary. Terrorists must be accountable for their actions, and those who sponsor them must also be held accountable, Mr. Speaker. They should be brought before justice, as is stated in this motion before us, and I support this motion. We must do this within a very broad coalition of all countries that favor democracy, and have a greater role for international institutions such as the War Crimes Tribunal or the United Nations. I support the fact that Canada has subscribed to Article Five of the NATO Treaty, but that's not sufficient, let's be clear here. A blank cheque for any measure at any time must be debated by our institutions, by our Parliament. Parliament must be consulted. That is the democratic example, but we must show the entire planet, Mr. Speaker. A response that is in keeping with our democratic values is appropriate. We must not fall into the trap of a war of civilizations or religions. Let us be respectful to both God and Allah. Let's not get God involved in the wars of men, Mr. Speaker. This is not a war between good and evil. We have to get out of that kind of dichotomy that serves the Bin Ladens of the world. Too often, evil is done to justify the empire of good. Empires can never serve good. I know that terrorism is a horrible thing, that religious fundamentalism is an abject philosophy, and fanaticism spreads evil. But as a Democrat, as Democrats, all of us, we must ensure that we punish those responsible, but we must spread democracy, because only peoples under these regimes will be able to put an end to this fanaticism. Great democracies such as the United States, the first greatest democracy in the world, both Canada, the European Union, Quebec, all democracies must take action. Fanaticism develops in fertile ground, like mushrooms on rot. If we want to eliminate not only Bin Laden, but others who may appear, we must attack these rotting situations that allow fanaticism to develop. That's just poverty, the absence of democracy, dictatorship. That is the challenge we are facing, Mr. Speaker. We must not be blindly pacifistic either. The pacifists of 1939 were wrong. That gave rise to Hitler, Mr. Speaker. Nor should we have reactions that attack only the effects rather than the cause. We waged war against Saddam Hussein in 91, but he's still there, and his people still suffer. And he's benefiting from this situation like other potentates who rule as dictators while being millionaires themselves. We are at a turning point for democracies that are threatened on their home soil, very close to here. But that's not the first war of the 21st century. Since the beginning of the year 2000, war has gone on in Chechnya, in the Middle East, in Angola, in many other places worldwide. This is, however, a new kind of war, where the civil population is not only attacked, but used in a cowardly, inhuman, demented way, Mr. Speaker. For all the dead, in their honor, we have to be responsible, vigilant, determined. We have a duty to see to the triumph of democracy, freedom, and the values that animate these, so that these deaths are not pointless. My party will support the motion, Mr. Speaker.
Questions and comments? Resuming debate.
The Honorable Member for Halifax.
Mr. Speaker, I rise today to join all Canadians who are still in shock and attempting to face the anger, the rage, the disgust that is rising within them. Last week's events in our neighbor's country to the south are of an unbelievable level of horror.
Mr. Speaker, by reaffirming that the New Democratic Party joins with citizens around the world in demanding that the perpetrators of these heinous crimes be trapped down and
After the horrible events of last Tuesday, I issued a statement with the strongest wording that I could possibly find in order to express the feelings of my colleagues and myself.
I call for reflection and restraint in our response. And today I want to reinforce that plea. The plea that the same values that cause us to be outraged and repulsed by these acts of barbarity must guide us all, and particularly world leaders in their response. And I want, Mr. Speaker, to say that I think our Prime Minister, on behalf of all Canadians who share those sentiments, rose to the occasion and provided very sound words and wise counsel to that effect. These extremely dangerous times, it is essential that we reaffirm our commitment, our commitment to pursuing peaceful solutions to the tensions and hostilities that breed such mindless violence in our world. In the immediate aftermath of the horrific death and destruction, people were driven, understandably, to demand instant massive military retaliation to these terrorist atrocities. But as freedom-loving citizens have grasped the complexity and the magnitude of what has happened, the imperative of a more measured response, a more multilateral response, and a more informed response must form the basis of our actions. Not to respond would be unthinkable. It would diminish and demean American leadership and would surely invite further attacks, wrote Charles G. Boyd, a retired Air Force general in Wednesday's Washington Post. But to react excessively or inaccurately, he wrote, would put us on the same moral footing as the cowards who perpetrated yesterday's attack. Mr. Speaker, Canadians know that we have a very special relationship with the United States of America, and Canadians value that relationship with our neighbor to the south. But we also have a special role internationally. And if there was ever a time that both our neighbors to the south and the world needed to hear the voice of Canada, it is now. Our neighbors were thrown into a state of shock last week. As the depth and the breadth of the personal tragedies come to grip their collective soul, the cry of vengeance from many quarters will surely grow louder. As America's closest neighbor and friend, we owe it to them to listen and to support. But we must also give them the benefit of our understanding of the events. A true friend lends a guiding hand when someone is blinded by grief and by rage. The cry from America today and from around the world is that this can never be allowed to happen again. And, Mr. Speaker, we must resolve to see that this can never happen again. But if we pursue the path of blind vengeance, the path of the clenched fist, we are guaranteeing that this will happen again. Military strikes, while they may satisfy an understandable desire for vengeance, will solve nothing if thousands more innocent people are victimized in some other part of the world. A survivor of the 93 World Trade Center bomb blast has said, and I quote, "As I silently remember my friends and coworkers who have perished, I know only this: if we fail to wage peace instead of war, if we do not learn to value all life as fervently as we value our own, then their deaths will mean nothing, and terror and violence will remain our dark In this House, Mr. Speaker, three decades ago, the first leader of the New Democratic Party, Tommy Douglas, stated that our task is to understand the forces at work in our society and to seek to influence them towards constructive ends. We need to ask ourselves some tough questions. And it seems to me, at a terrible time like this, we could do well to ask ourselves what wise counsel Lester Pearson might offer. In the wake of these terrifying events, we need to reflect. We need to reflect on the kind of international community we have created, where the images are actually dancing in the streets, where an international community can allow 5,000 children a month to die of malnutrition in Iraq, or hunger and preventable disease can claim the lives of thousands and thousands of children in the too many impoverished nations of the world. We have to ask ourselves and consider what it means. What kind of political leadership funds and trains the likes of the Mujahideen and Osama bin Laden to overthrow the Afghanistan government and then get caught out when these same people turn their evil skills on their former supporters? Unless and until we base our policies and our allegiances on long-term values, as the Prime Minister has said this morning, and not on short-term strategies, we will continue to create the monsters that come back to haunt us. We need to tell the world that in the eyes of Canada, the wanton destruction of life and property is absolutely unacceptable, whether it is in the United States or in Rwanda, whether it is in Washington or Beirut or Baghdad or Bosnia. We need the world to know that we practice what we preach in Canada. We need Canada to know that when Tommy Douglas said the means we use largely determine the ends we achieve, and that resorting to violence destroys the goals that we seek before we even reach them, that he spoke of a standard by which we must all judge our actions. Mr. Speaker, let me be clear: I am not advocating pacifism or appeasement in the face of aggression. The international community must spare no effort in bringing to justice all of those responsible for these atrocities, and rid the world of the scourge of terrorism. But, Mr. Speaker, this response must be carried out based in association with the principle of the rule of law. As many as 100 Canadians may have died in this crime, along with the United States' loss of thousands, as many as 40 other countries have lost sons and daughters. This, Mr. Speaker, is a crime against humanity, and an international court should mete out the punishment. No country should be called upon to be the judge, the jury, and the executioner, least of all, the country, least of all, Mr. Speaker, the country that has suffered the greatest loss. Supporting foreign invasions, assassinations, and the abandonment of our values will raise the level of violence. It will lessen our security. It will diminish our capacity to advise our closest friend at a time when they are most in need of wise counsel. We've seen the results of ever-increasing levels of violence in other parts of the world. Indeed, this act is not an isolated incident directed at America alone. If initial assumptions about culpability or inspiration for this attack are true, this is the latest gruesome chapter in an ever-expanding cycle of violence that has already claimed cities and countries and whole generations. How does it increase our security to bomb countries into the Stone Age? Mr. Speaker, today I would also like briefly to address very disturbing developments over the course of the past week, where visible minorities have been targeted as people look for scapegoats, both here in Canada and abroad. And other leaders have addressed this issue as well. The very ugliest and most horrifying incident was surely the firebombing of a mosque in Montreal. But we've all heard about other incidents. The Canadian Council for Refugees, in their statement of September 14th, wisely reminds us: many new Canadians came to this country to escape from violence and persecution on the basis of religion, race, or nationality. Refugees and immigrants are as horrified as anyone by the event... by the events and condemn the violence. Canadians need to work to ensure that our country is a haven from hatred and discrimination. In the coming days, we will surely hear arguments that we reexamine our immigration policy and procedures. We've already heard some. We in the NDP agree that much needs to be done to overhaul our immigration system, but with an eye towards greater compassion, security, and efficiency. As we debate this issue, I invite all members of this House to remember that their words and their passions, the passions that they excite, can have very real repercussions on the many new Canadians and visible minorities that make up the diversity and the beauty of our great land. It's reassuring that so many voices have been heard, political leaders, community leaders, and ordinary citizens, counseling against doing anything to create a backlash, to create prejudicial attitudes and actions directed towards innocent Canadians. Let us extend that same concern and consideration to other countries. And as one wise elderly woman who has been a lifelong friend of peace said to me over the weekend, there is surely a lesson for us to learn and hear in our own words. If we are absolutely in agreement that we must stand against any scapegoating of innocent civilians in our own country, then surely the same consideration and concern has to be extended to innocent civilians around the world. Mr. Speaker, the coming debate will lead us into other areas of domestic concerns, such as whether or not we are to participate in the proposed national missile defense. There can be no clearer example, surely, of the redundancy of such a system than the terrorist atrocities that were committed in the United States last week. The brutal and simple logic of what we have witnessed is that immense damage can be caused without a single missile ever being launched. We live in an age where weapons of mass destruction can be transported in suitcases or commandeered with a knife. The Shimon Perez of Israel stated last week, "Up until now, the entire world was organized into armies and enemies. Today, the classic armies remain, yet the classic enemies have practically vanished. In their place, there are now new threats, previously unknown to us. Primary among them is the threat of terrorism. Strategy, tactics, and organized forces have yet to be developed against terrorism." The fundamental and true conclusion is that a strategy must be developed and military and security organizations must be established which will prevent that terrorism. Mr. Speaker, Canada must be a leader in searching out these solutions. We need to call on our earlier traditions of having a more independent foreign policy. We need to always think in terms of multilateralism. We need to use our special relationship with the United States to represent all progressive and peace-loving countries that want to build lasting solutions to the conditions that breed such horrendous violence. We surely, Mr. Speaker, can do no better than to heed the words of John F. Kennedy when he stated that "those who make peaceful revolution impossible make violent revolution inevitable." Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Questions and comments? Resuming debate, the right honourable member for Calgary Centre.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am honoured to take part in this debate on behalf of my colleagues in this parliamentary coalition. Sir, six days and a few hours ago, the world we knew changed brutally and forever, when hijacked planes were flown deliberately into crowded buildings with the explicit purpose of killing innocent people and breaking the confidence of societies built upon freedom and order. Our hearts go out to the individuals and families, including far too many Canadians who have been struck directly. The shock and the loss that engulfed those families are almost beyond belief because this atrocity was unexpected as well as brutal. The victims started their day Tuesday, as we all did, expecting the ordinary. And suddenly, without warning, without reason, their precious lives were taken by a terrible, premeditated strike against order and humanity. Sir, my young nephew, Scott Delaney, worked until very recently on the 51st floor of the World Trade Center. He was scheduled, six days and a few hours ago, to go back there for a job interview. Another obligation intervened, and he did not go. That chance decision saved his life, just as the deliberate decision of the terrorists stole the lives, the future, the hopes of thousands of sons and daughters and friends from around the world.
The entire world was shaken by last Tuesday's tragedy. On that day, all of us became victims, victims of acts of horrible cruelty, acts that would shatter the public order and humanity in its entirety. And today, we live in a world that is very different from the one in which we lived barely six days ago. On September 11th, 2001, the face of the world changed, and we will never be the same again. We will never be able to find the words to express our sadness or our support for the families and friends of those who perished. However, along with our thoughts and prayers, we send our determination to ensure that the murderous and tragic consequences of terrorism will never cause free societies to give in to terrorist attacks, and the values that are so dear to us will remain.
Sir, we can never grieve enough for those victims, for their families, for the futures that were torn away. But we must offer them more than our grief, more than our sympathy, more than our prayers. We owe them our determination to ensure that while terrorists can take lives, they cannot destroy free societies. I want to echo very strongly a sentiment expressed by other leaders in this House. An essential element of our free society is that we judge people on their character and on their accomplishments, not upon where they come from, not upon their color, not upon their faith. The people who committed this atrocity are extremists. That is who they are. We must be very careful that in responding to this crisis, we do not create new victims or blame whole communities for the acts of people who in any society would be judged extremist. And to be clear and for the record, all of us in this House know that no one is more shocked or more offended by this atrocity in the United States than members of the Canadian Arab and Muslim communities. No one is more offended than they are. But, sir, if we in this parliament seek to be fair, so must we be forceful. Our response must be effective, focused, and strong. This is a challenge in which Canada must play a leading role. We are not neutral on issues of terror and freedom and order. They reach to the heart and to the core of our nature as a nation. The Prime Minister said that Canada should not become a fortress against the world. That's true. But, sir, Canada should be a fortress in this world, a nation known by our friends, known by our allies, to be strong and to be reliable. That is the challenge for Canada in the months to come. At our best, Canada's role in the world has been to ensure that freedom and order prevail and prevail together. We have done that in times of war, and we have done that in times of peace. We have earned a reputation as a nation that stands on the front line of defending and advancing free societies. And that is where we must stand now. I congratulate the Prime Minister for the firmness he finally showed on Friday. This nation, our people, our traditions, our parliament and government can play a leading role in shaping the world's response to this new terror. That's what Canada does in this difficult world. We put our values to work. We did that when NATO was formed, when peacekeeping was established, when new treaties of trade were framed. We did it when apartheid was fought. And we must do that now with our closest friends next door, with our allies against terror around the world. The place to start, sir, is with one stark and simple fact. Our world changed profoundly Tuesday morning. People and places that once felt secure now feel exposed. Systems of protection and prevention, which on Monday night seemed adequate, were proven brutally Tuesday to be inadequate. We must rebuild that sense of security. Indeed, free people themselves are already doing that. What we are seeing in the long lines of volunteers at blood banks and in the people going back to work in places that so recently were targets is more than just compassion, or courage, or defiance. It represents, sir, the strength of the values which we have always claimed free systems nourish: the optimism, the activism, the balance in resisting a rush to judgment, and most of all, the palpable sense of personal and community responsibility. In such a material and self-indulgent world, one sometimes wonders whether those values will erode. Now, they have been put to a shocking test. And they are robust and resilient, rational and responsible. But those attacks also demonstrate how much the world has changed, how wrong it would be for us to pretend that old ways work, and how urgent it is to deal with the real threats of Tuesday and today and tomorrow.
We must rebuild the feeling of security that enveloped all Canadians, either rightly or wrongly, before last Tuesday. But we must, this time, rebuild this feeling of security on a solid foundation. We must immediately undertake all of the necessary steps to ensure that such a tragedy will never happen again. The government must act as quickly as the Canadian people have acted. The Canadian people, when faced with this attack, acted immediately with all of the vigor and strength of a friend, of a family member. We, parliamentarians, have the obligation to follow their example and continue what they have begun. We must not let them down. We must act immediately and ensure that the necessary changes will be made without delay. In these days of mourning and very profound sadness, our leaders must comfort all Canadians, and only concrete action will give them this comfort.
This is work, sir, in which the whole nation should be engaged, and certainly work in which all of the nation's representatives assembled here in parliament should be engaged. This government has come to parliament with a resolution. But this House of Commons, representing all of Canada, can do much more than resolve. We can be, we should be, an active instrument of Canada's response to this terror. With agreement, which I am sure would exist, the government could act today to authorize the committees of this House on transport, on immigration, on justice, on foreign affairs, and on other relevant matters to begin immediately to gather evidence and to gather advice in public on what changes we need to make our nation more secure. These issues, sir, are too important to be left to ministers and public servants meeting in secret. And, Mr. Speaker, the changes that may be required may be too radical to leave to the custodians of the status quo. If the government is serious about an honest analysis of our system, let it trust parliament to help in that work. Let parliament reach out to the people who elect us so they can be reassured in this time of doubt. The government cannot close its mind in advance to changes in any area of policy related to security. It must be prepared to reconsider funding levels, to CSUS. It must be prepared to examine immigration policy, airport security, aircraft security, border security, and the activities of groups that might be associated with terrorism. Mr. Speaker, even before Tuesday's tragedy, the government was warned of weaknesses in our security arrangements. The leader of the opposition has mentioned several actions which Canada could have taken. In that spirit, let me quote from the CSUS report released June 12th, 2001, "Less than three months before, planes plowed into the Pentagon and the World Trade Center towers." And I quote, "Terrorism in the years ahead..." This is from CSUS. "Terrorism in the years ahead..." This is from CSUS, three months ago. "Terrorism in the years ahead is expected to become more violent, indiscriminate, and unpredictable. There will likely be terrorist attacks whose sole aim would be to incite terror itself. A hardening attitude and a willingness on behalf of certain terrorist organizations in North America reinforce the belief that Canadians, now more than ever, are potential victims and Canada a potential venue for terrorist attacks." That was the warning given by CSUS to this parliament, to this government, less than three months before the attacks of Tuesday. Let me quote from the Auditor General's report of 2000, which said the Department of Immigration, and I quote, "could also improve the way it collects criminal intelligence information gathered by various stakeholders." It said that information is not systematically exchanged because computer systems are not compatible. Data are not always shared between the Department of Immigration and the RCMP and CSUS. That was a warning more than a year ago by the Auditor General of Canada about our capacity to deal with people who might be seeking to come here to wreak terror on this continent or elsewhere in the world, or here in our home. Those are only two examples among many of warnings that were given and not acted upon. They are clearly areas where the government can act now immediately to strengthen the security of Canada and of the world. Sir, parliament should be given a detailed description of what the government now knows about the Tuesday attacks. Parliament should be told what changes the government is now contemplating, what reviews of policy it plans, what military or intelligence or other role Canada can play in a campaign against the terrorists. And, sir, if some of that information is confidential, then let the government give that information to parliamentary leaders on a confidential basis. This is a Canadian concern. This is parliament's concern. This is not a matter reserved to those who sit in the secrecy of the Privy Council office. To rebuild the trust of the To rebuild the trust of the public, to rebuild the trust of our allies, to rebuild the trust of financial markets, parliament must be fully formed and informed and advised. The Tuesday attacks have obvious economic implications: implications for growth, for revenues, for spending priorities. This government has yet to present a full budget to Canadians. We know the minister's revenue forecasts were wrong before the attack. Parliament and Canadians have a right to know what the facts are now. We need to know the costs of the projected new spending the government has proposed. Those new figures must be known within the government which authorized the spending. Let the public know so the public can be heard in deciding whether these priorities are more important than the priority of making our nation secure. Sir, it's not often that we recognize a turning point in history. But we are a different world this week than we are a different world than we were a week ago. And bear this in mind: the technology of terror didn't change, nor did the purpose of terror, which is and always has been, quite precisely, to explode the order and the confidence which are the basis on which most of us live our lives. What changed was the audacity of the terrorists. They have warned us that the threat runs wider than it did before. That means that our response must change, must be broader, tougher, itself more audacious. This was a calculated attack upon the kind of open and safe society in which Canadians believe so profoundly. So it was a direct attack on us, on all of us. And we must be prepared to respond directly. We must deny the terrorists the psychological victory they seek. And we must organize ourselves to protect and assert the civilized values that were so deliberately attacked. No nation, no nation has a greater stake in that response than Canada. And we must play our full part.
In the next few days, the next months and years, we will grieve. But today, now, we also must act to ensure that the values we hold so dear and which characterize us shall prevail.
Years, we will grieve. But now we must also act to ensure that the values we hold so dear prevail. Sir, that will involve hard decisions. It will require us to apply our values in the context of a new, changed, real, tough world. This world needs an active Canadian government and, in a time when democracies are under scrutiny, an active Canadian parliament. We have an opportunity to shape this new world if we are prepared to look at these issues open to new realities, determined to play a role of leadership. The world needs Canada's leadership and strength now. And this parliament, I am confident, would be prepared to support a government that showed that kind of leadership.